Kate, could we have roll call, please?
Sure. Sean Kidd?
Here.
Bruce Robinson?
Here.
Jim Davis?
Here.
Doug Bryson?
Don Williams?
Eric Schirborn?
Here. Okay, and you said that Don is excused? We're not sure.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Richard, are there any agenda changes or revisions?
Not from the printed agenda, but we had talked earlier about the having a VRD hearing, and just wanted to make clear this has actually been postponed, not to the, actually, we had talked about also postponing it to December, but actually, it's going to be in January.
Not until January.
Right, so if anybody's tuned in to watch the VRD hearing, they can move on if they want.
You can watch cartoons?
Yes.
Okay. You folks weren't here for a VRD hearing or any of the hearings? Okay, thank you. Next, our approval of the minutes for September 17th, 2013. Everybody's had a chance to read them. If there aren't any revisions or changes or additions, could we have a request for the approval of the minutes for September 17th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain because I was not here for that meeting. Next is the request for approval of the minutes for October 1st, 2013. Again, if there aren't any additions or changes, could we have a motion to approve those, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, next is public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Are you folks here to talk on something, or were you just here to observe, huh? Observing is fine, okay. Now, we've got that down. There aren't any written orders, resolutions, or written communication schedule this evening? We don't have any public hearings scheduled for this evening? There is no old business scheduled this evening, so next is item eight, some new business. Richard Appicello, you have some training for us? That's what it says here, so...
Back in, I believe it was May, we talked about quasi-judicial proceedings, and you have that handout Ethos has provided you with, and I think I'm going to start again and just talk about quasi-judicial proceedings again, because then I want to talk about legislative proceedings and how they're different. So, it's been a while, so we'll just talk briefly about quasi-judicial proceedings. When principally when you're sitting here, you're acting usually in a quasi-judicial capacity. And what that means is, an application has been submitted and it's being processed in accordance with the existing standards and criteria in the code. So, someone is seeking an approval of something, variance or conditional use, rezoning, and they're looking for an approval, and you're bound to apply the existing law to the application and the facts contained in that application. And so, when we look at what's legislative and what's quasi-judicial, we ask the question, is the application bound to result in a decision? Is it applying pre-existing criteria to concrete facts? And is it a closely subscribed factual situation, applying only relatively to a few number of people? And generally, if you can answer those questions in a negative, it's legislative, but if it is applying specific criteria and you don't have to come to a decision, well, I'm sorry, if you have to come to a decision because someone submitted an application and there's a 120-day clock running, then we're pretty much going to say that's a quasi-judicial decision. Probably the most important part of that is the fact that you are acting like a judge, quasi-judicial, and that you're applying the existing law, the criteria for approval in the code, and only those criteria, to the facts that are submitted in evidence as part of the application. So, in any quasi-judicial procedure, your, you know, we go through some procedural safeguards, I call them in the statute in 197763, and in your code, and we announce what the applicable criteria are, and we list them, and they're usually also in the staff report, and then the applicant addresses those criteria in his presentation to you, and what you do is you identify the applicable criteria, you look in the record, the official record of the proceeding for competent evidence, something that's evidence that a reasonable person would believe that's relevant to the issue of whether or not the application, it goes to the application, whether or not approves or disproves compliance with a criterion. And usually, you go through a mental process of analyzing the facts as applied to the law, so if the criteria oversimplifies, says the setback is 15 feet, and their building is only 12 feet away, it doesn't comply. You guys do the math and say that, apply the facts to the law, and then you issue your decision, non-compliance, denial. Usually, in this, in a quasi-judicial decision, it's more complicated than a numerical analysis like that. It's usually something like, is the application consistent with the neighborhood, or does it adversely affect the livability of the neighborhood? Some kind of planning-type criterion requires more thought than just, is five greater than 10, or less than 10, or that kind of analysis. In the process of a quasi-judicial hearing, we follow certain procedural safeguards, and in the, one of those is that you have an impartial decision-maker. The other is that you provide procedural due process. They're all kind of tied together. Procedural due process is essentially notice and an opportunity to be heard, so that's why we read the applicable criteria at the beginning of the hearing, why we include it in our notice, so that everybody knows under what standards they're being measured. Due process also involves a meaningful opportunity to be heard, that's why we have an order of proceedings where the applicant gets up and they have time to present their case, and then those opposed get up and they have time to present their case. Then we have a close of the hearing and a close of the record, and it comes back to you for deliberations. Now, if you've received information outside of the hearing, then we don't have fairness, and that's why we have ex parte prohibition. So, ex parte is simply getting information outside of the hearing room, and if you have information outside of the hearing room, you can basically not just commit procedural error, but substantive error, in that a party just doesn't have to demonstrate that they've been prejudiced if, in fact, an ex parte disclosure has occurred, and the matter can be remanded and reversed, which is basically a great waste of time. So, we try to avoid ex parte communications at all costs, but if they do inadvertently occur, you disclose the substance of the communication as soon as possible onto the record, and if you have something in writing, you submit it to the planning staff and they get it in the record. You disclose at the hearing that the substance of the communication, and then anyone has the opportunity to rebut the substance of that communication. The other impartial decision-maker, part of due process, is making sure that you're impartial when you make the decision. Now, rarely are local elected and appointed officials completely impartial, especially when it comes to land use matters, but what is required is not the appearance of impartiality, but you're simply must make the quasi-judicial decision based upon the facts and evidence submitted in the record, and not based upon any other considerations. So, usually, you can defeat an allegation of bias or prejudgment by affirmatively stating for the record that you have, you've disclosed any ex parte communications, and that you will make the decision based on the evidence in the record, and not on anything else. What could hurt you, and the only cases I've seen where a decision-maker has been found or a decision's been overturned for bias is when actual bias is demonstrated. And actual bias is difficult to demonstrate, but if, for example, you're out in public making public statements, and those things come back, and they come into this hearing room, and they say, you've made all these statements out in public, you would never vote for this under any circumstances, that's the kind of thing that will come back to haunt you. That's why generally, it's not a good idea to talk about, especially quasi-judicial applications. That's pretty much the summary of what we talked about in May. Also, I guess we talked about conflicts of interest, and I guess, and that, the most important thing I'd tell you, if you believe that you have a financial conflict of interest, you should call me, we could talk about it, but I'll probably put you in touch with the Ethics Commission if you have any worries. I know that at least one of you has in the past contacted me about concerns and gotten that squared away with the Ethics Commission to make sure that you don't take any chances, because anything I tell you won't protect you from a fine from the Ethics Commission. That's why, if you get advice from them, it'll protect you. So, one of the factors of quasi-judicial decisions is you're basically applying pre-existing criteria to concrete facts. And I'd like to tell you that when you engage in a legislative proceeding, that it's wide open. You don't have to worry about these parameters, these constraints, but I need you to understand that it's not exactly wide open. You're not the Roman Emperor holding his thumb up or putting his thumb down going, "I like this legislation," or "I don't like this legislation." You actually are constrained by a significant amount of law, especially in the land use arena. Now, this is, as a local government, the city has a charter, and the charter has expansive language in it regarding the powers of the city. So, the city can legislate typically on any matter within the power of the home role city, and the only real constraint is that we can't act inconsistent with state law. And we also need to follow our own procedural rules and the procedural rules of the state. So, that's, we have a great deal of power as a legislative body, but when I say we have to follow the rules, that we can't act inconsistent with state law, and we can't act inconsistent with the procedural rules in the state statute, that actually is a big, but, exception there when it comes to land use. As you know, Oregon's land use system is kind of a top-down system, where we have Oregon state statutes that are land use statutes, and they establish both procedural and substantive requirements. There is also an entire set of state land use goals, which are codified in the Oregon administrative rules, and you have the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, which administers those rules and reviews comprehensive plans, which you are required to adopt, and which you have adopted, and it has been acknowledged, and that comprehensive plan acts as your constitution for your land development regulations, encompassing your zoning code and your subdivision regulations. And so, and all those regulations include procedural and substantive requirements for land use. So, there is a quite considerable parameters, I guess, which are imposed on you when you're So, I'm going to start, I'll just talk about some of the procedural issues. So, let's say we would like to engage in some legislative act, we'd like to bring some legislation before you. Usually, that starts with one of these people, a good idea, and they write it down, but, you know, we can come talk to you about it, but the formal process is governed by state statute and by your own code. So, starting first with statutes, we have Measure 56, which is 227-186, and that's, it's a state statute that was adopted, a measure that was adopted, I don't remember the year now, but it was quite a while ago, and what it does is require individual notices to property owners if we are going to rezone property, which would include the typical change, like I'm going to go to the map and I'm going to change this property that says residential, I'm going to change it on the map to commercial. Everybody understands that, is rezoning. But rezoning is also defined as adopting an ordinance that in any, in a manner that limits or prohibits uses that were previously allowed in the district. So, pretty much, if we're going to make a change in the zoning code about what's permitted, what's not permitted, in the list of uses, or in our supplemental regulations, we're sending out individual notices to affected property owners, which I think is something like six, now with the annexation, 6,000 some odd people. So, it's not a small matter to propose legislation. Sometimes, if we're not affecting, not falling precisely within that definition of rezoning, we can make a small change without going to all that notice, but Oregon land use system requires that, and it's quite a large financial burden. We can include those notices and, you know, tax notices and water bills and that kind of stuff, but that doesn't always reach everyone. So, in addition to Measure 56, we have to write the ordinance, which, you know, when it's just an idea, that's kind of always just, you know, while we write it as an idea, but going through the whole public hearing process, this might change, but we have to write the ordinance and send it off to the department at the state, and if we change it substantially, you may have to give them more time, because they have the right to participate. So, that's in 197-610. So, we have some procedural constraints there, and that's just in the state law, and this is just procedure, not substance. Procedurally, also, you have a comprehensive plan, which has, I was looking on page 13 or something earlier, and there's a couple pages of procedures depending on the extent of the comprehensive plan amendment. And remember, your comprehensive plan map is also your zoning map, so when you get into changing your zoning map, you're doing a comp plan amendment, and, you know, so it's kind of all tied together. And so, there's some procedural requirements there about who can initiate it, and then in Chapter 1788 of your own code, you have an ordinance which establishes procedures about, again, just procedures, about who can initiate an amendment to the code, who can initiate amendments to the text. So, it's not just, yeah, this is a good idea, let's go ask the Planning Commission for a recommendation. We have procedures that we have to follow. That's just procedural, not substantive. Well, Measure 56 and the notice to the LCD, those 35 days before the first hearing before you, they got to have the ordinance. Then we have the parameters established in statute and in case law regarding the substance of what you're talking about. So, again, you're, if you're amending the text of your zoning code, Title 17, or the text of your comp plan, you're governed by, number one, your own rules, both the comprehensive plan and your zoning code, Chapter 1788, establish criteria for amending your comp plan and your zoning code. And your comp plan simply refers to conform to the statewide planning goals and be consistent and compatible with other unamended portions of the comprehensive plan, so we usually refer to that as compliance with the goals and state statutes, and internal consistency. And then, your zoning code, 1788, goes a little further and requires that the proposed amendments not only be in conformance with the plan and other provisions of Title 17, so that they be in compliance, consistent with the comp plan, but also internally consistent with the rest of chapters, Title 17, your development code, your zoning code, but also requires that you make findings and that they be factually based and supported by competent evidence, or substantial evidence in the record, which is usually referred to as an adequate factual base. So, you can't just make stuff up, and you have to actually support it with evidence and make findings about how the evidence in the record works together consistently in Title 17 and with the goals and objectives in your comprehensive plan, and in turn, the goals and objectives in the state statutes, specifically the statewide planning goals. So, that's just, now, I didn't bring copies of the Oregon statewide planning goals here, but the goals are quite extensive, and it's not just a list of, like, we like clean water, we like clean air, that kind of thing. It's actually quite detailed and usually involves inventorying your resources and then establishing, balancing of protection, protection of those resources versus use of those resources. But there are 19 goals, I believe, and each of them has their own administrative rule in the Oregon administrative code. And so, when we're talking about doing a change to your regulations, we always have to be keeping in mind, are we implicating some specific provision of the Oregon administrative rules, or some provision of your comp plan that we need to address with some findings, or that we may have to address in the text of the amendments themselves? So, if we're talking about, for example, housing, you're, you have a housing goal in the state statutes, Goal 10, in the administrative rules, you also have housing provisions in your comprehensive plan, and your comprehensive plan talks about a lot of things you guys have been talking about, that there's competition between permanent residents seeking shelter at affordable prices, tourist industries seeking shelter for employees, elderly populations seeking retirement, seasonal residents seeking shelter, and that, you know, that's the, kind of, in the inventory discussion. Then it talks about your policies and your goals to encourage a wide range of housing types, to establish minimum construction and lock coverage requirements, to encourage multifamily buildings subject to design and landscape control, to stabilize and protect existing residential areas from deterioration and incompatible development. So, these are the kind of things that when you're processing an amendment, you need to think about, is this amendment consistent with our comprehensive plan policies? Is it consistent with this Oregon administrative rule, which I didn't print out on Goal 10, on housing? And it's not just one goal, it's all the goals. Sometimes, people get fixated on the maps. When I was in Florida, we'd have these land use attorneys come in, and they would argue before the Planning Commission, "It says right on the land use map that I have high-density residential, see right there? Well, your comprehensive plan is like this thick." And one page was the map. You know, there were all these other elements with text that talked about when it was appropriate to develop a site, and environmental constraints, and conservation element, and public facilities that were available to services of development. So, sometimes, people get focused on one element, and there's actually a whole, it's a whole palette of things that you have to balance and consider when you engage in this legislative process. So, be wary of the person that gets up there and only focuses on one piece, because there very well may be something in another goal that you have to balance against a goal that they're pointing out. So, if they're pointing at something in their comprehensive plan and saying, "You can't adopt this because of this text in the comp plan, says you shall do this or you shall do that." It, you very well may have something in another element of your comp plan that goes the other way, so you have to take that all into consideration. So, that's, that's, just in terms of your own code, when you process an amendment, requires that you look at, from, in your zoning code, in your comprehensive plan, amendment to the zoning code, amendment to the text of the zoning code, amendment to the map, including the comp plan map, that you look at the statewide planning goals, and that you look at the internal consistency with the comp plan, and that you look at internal consistency with Title 17 and the rest of the development regulations in the code. We have subdivision regulations also in our code. And you look at all those things for internal consistency. So, it's not just this or this, "I like that idea, I don't like that idea." I mean, we all want to be creative, and, but we have parameters that we're operating within. Now, when we come to you with something, we also have to take into consideration not just the restrictions of our own code, but there are some specific statutes in Oregon that would govern specific matters. So, inclusionary zoning, for instance, if you wanted to set limits for, you, Mr. Developer, have to offer these units in your development to low-income individuals meeting certain criteria, or you can only offer them at certain costs. There's actually a statute that prohibits inclusionary zoning unless it's done on a negotiated or incentive basis. So, if you're negotiating a development agreement with a developer, or you've set up a system of density bonuses, if you provide affordable housing, we will give you a density bonus, those are permissible ways of doing it. So, while we can be creative, we may have a goal, we want to provide affordable housing, or we want to force new development to provide affordable housing, you have to balance that against a statute which says, you can't just require it, but here are permissible ways in which you can achieve that goal. So, it just happens to be that, you know, the density bonuses and those kind of creative mechanisms are specifically addressed in that statute. Another example would be transferable development rights. When we were talking about the Villages of Cascadehead acquisition, we had a workshop here in this room with the city council and the interested parties about the Villages acquisition, and we talked about that project and how many units are in it, and the fact that the city had acquired the property with open space money, and that we would be changing or somehow acknowledging that on the development plan, that the knoll, the area that will be set aside for open space use, will no longer have development on it, and we'll have to process an amendment to fix that, to correct that. And so, one of the suggestions was, well, we could take the density that, you know, just imagine that there's a plat on top of the knoll, and it shows how many houses are going to be there, and, okay, now you're going to take that away and permanently dedicate that area to open space. Where do those units go? Well, we talked about converting them to transfer development rights, or transfer development credits, and putting them in a bank, and say, okay, now we have these units, which we might use, for example, for, to give incentives to people to do affordable housing, as in the statute I just mentioned, or we could sell them on the open market. Well, where is this idea coming from? Well, there's a state statute that says you may establish a system which would allow the severing of the development right from the actual land, and that you could sell it and/or transfer it, or use it for other purposes. So, this state statute's in Chapter 94, and it sets out some parameters for establishing by ordinance that system. Well, guess what's in your comprehensive plan? Paragraph on transfer development rights. So, your comprehensive plan is implementing the state statute, or at least acknowledging that it is one of the tools that are available for you to, in a very creative way, maybe utilize development, severable development rights, provided you come up with this ordinance and system to do it, to maybe obtain, or through the granting of bonuses, or just selling out... and system to do it, to maybe obtain or through the granting of bonuses or just selling outright, transfer development credits for the purpose of providing incentives for affordable housing. So it doesn't specifically mention affordable housing, it's just one of the things you can use. So when we come here with a legislative proposal, it's usually something staff has been thinking about in terms of the context of all these ordinances. And we may not throw all this on you at the first meeting and say, oh, by the way, this is all the, this framework that we're working under, but we're usually aware that we have constraints. Usually, there's a state statute or administrative rule or our own comp plan or our own Title 17 is creating some framework for the proposal that's coming before you. So that's just an example of, of some of the constraints. Now, outside of your own code and the Oregon Administrative Rules, you have constitutional limitations on what we do in legislative proceedings. And probably most people would recognize that equal protection is something that we want to, we want to, we have to comply with. So under, under the law, equal protection just means you're going to treat similarly situated people the same, and if you're going to treat people differently, you're going to have to have a good reason. Now, there's the rationally related to a legitimate state interest test, basically, that if, if it doesn't involve a suspect classification or a fundamental right, then the test is fairly simple. Does it make sense? Do we have a rational reason for treating, you know, the owners of short-term rental units differently than the owners of long-term rental units? Do you know, is there a rational basis for that distinction? That's the, that's the test. It's not some heightened level of scrutiny, because if you're basing your decision based on race or sex or you're making a distinction based on race or sex or, or some other suspect classification or some fundamental right, like the right to vote or right to travel or something like that, then you better have a really good compelling reason and usually you just don't go there. So that's a constitutional limitation on the things we can bring to you. Similarly, we typically don't come to you with something like, that would affect a taking of someone's property. That is, we're not going to propose a regulation that would eliminate all economically viable use of someone's property, would violate the state constitution as well as the federal constitution. And this is, I guess it's been talked about for a lot, and so you're pretty much aware that if we came in here and tried to propose a regulation, it was so, went so far that it precluded all use of someone's property, you would recognize that immediately as having a problem. There is a issue, though, sometimes people think that they like to, it's about considering the property as a whole. Usually, if you're saying, wait a minute, you can't get in here and develop these wetlands, but you own ten acres and you have a half acre wetlands on the property, that's not going to be a taking of that half acre. So a lot of times, people just want to say, no, no, don't look at the other nine and a half acres, only look at this. That's not taking the property as a whole. So typically, we protect ourselves against those kind of requirements by, if we have a platted lot or a lot of record, we'll make sure that someone has some economically viable use by having some provision, a lot of record that would protect and will allow you to build on a lot, even if it's substandard, that kind of a, of a way for provision. But as I mentioned earlier, transfer development rights is a way sometimes cities and counties will address properties that have constraints. So if you have a property that's constrained, either it's on a steep slope or it has wetlands, a lot of times you can create the development right and make it severable from the property. So sometimes you allow it to, say you have one acre that's really a good position to develop, it's, it's, it's appropriate, it's not on a slope, it's not, doesn't have wetlands, it's close to public facilities and you have nine other acres that are contiguous that are completely in indebted with wetlands and endangered species and those kind of things. You can sometimes transfer within the site, the density and the development rights to the one acre. So you can do that usually through a mechanism that would allow clustering of development. Or you can transfer off-site to another location. The, the concept of transfer development rights only really works if you designate where properties can, where development rights can be transferred from and then you create a receptor zone, a place where they can go to. Usually, it can be on the same site, it can be to a different site, and usually you pick a site where you have adequate public facilities to service increased development. I realize I sometimes go off and talk about things that are interesting to me like transfer development rights, so, but as an example, it's a good example of applying the, the structure and authorization in state statute to achieve objectives you may have in your comprehensive plan. Your own, your own plan recognizes.
Transferring those rights, could you say you own those nine acres that are in question and Bob over there has nine acres that, that he'd like to increase the density on? Can you do that to another person too and just give him your rights or does it just have to be within property that you own?
Well, you can set it up, usually in a plan development or a development agreement, you can transfer within your property if your, if your code authorizes it. Like, some places I've worked have said, if you have wetlands, you can't develop them. But if you want to, we'll allow you to transfer one-half the density that would be achieved if the, just pretend the wetlands was uplands, and you can transfer one-half of the density onto the property that you own in the same parcel. So that's like an example of a plan development provision that would allow the transfer of density onsite. Now, in a pure transfer development rights, or actually, the state statute calls it transfer development credits and your comp plan calls it transfer development rights, but it's the same thing. Let's say over here, we have a piece of property that is constrained, it's on a hillside, there's no public facilities to it, it's very difficult to get water up here, and there's, it has a designation of residential, there's a certain number, let's say a hundred units that go here, if all the facilities were there. But we all agree, since it's adjacent to conservation land and it's scenic and historic, that maybe we'd like to see this set aside, but we don't want to, the money to just go buy it. Maybe we could ask this developer, hey, you can transfer those development rights here. And this is a commercial core we've designated downtown. And in this commercial core, we say, you can, you can build residences above this commercial project, up to this density, above what would otherwise be allowed. And the reason why it kind of makes sense is because we have all these public facilities down here, sewer and water and, and it's close to parks and you can walk here and there and it cuts down on transportation, getting to the supermarket and everything else. And it makes sense to do it here. Public facilities are available, so you can transfer, you could, if you were, you could sell it to this guy. Or if, you know, you guys were in partners, you could say, hey, let's do a joint project over here, I got the units, you got the property. But that's just an example of, but it's all integrated. You know, state statute, comp plan, and then you have to put it all together in your Title 17, your subdivision standards and all your standards for the foundation project and all those things have to, it has to be integrated. So it's not, again, it's not just, yeah, good idea, bad idea, we got to make sure it all fits together. And we have to do it in a way that doesn't discriminate against people and treat differently situated people differently. Can't just be available for people over here, it's not these people, or, you know, you have to try to make sure it's balanced. I wanted to talk about another constraint that's out there because it came up in one of our recent hearings and it has to do with Measure 49. And again, Measure 49 was like what came after Measure 37 and kind of replaced it. And what Measure 49 does is, you know, these are just things we have to think about when we propose regulations. It basically says if we enact a regulation which restricts, after 2007, January 2007, if we adopt a new regulation that restricts single-family residentially zoned property in such a way that it restricts residential use on single-family residential use property, we'd have to compensate the owner. And it's just, so it's like Measure 37 in that respect, but it's not as broad as Measure 37, because Measure 37 was not limited to residential use of residentially zoned property. So when we propose regulations, we first have to ask the question is, are we restricting single-family residentially zoned property and are we restricting residential use on those properties? So that's something to take into consideration, because it goes beyond the taking issue. Taking is all economic, reasonable, whereas Measure 49 is just taking away and something you could do now through a new regulation adopted after January 2007.
Like decreasing density?
Yeah, typically, I guess a, yeah, a good example would be enacting an overlay saying, we're, we're downzoning you. Then that's going to restrict your, your property. Now, there are exemptions to, to Measure 49 and, and so they're usually based on more historic nuisance kind of based things. So if things are, that fall into the nuisance category, you're not going to have to pay for safety regulations, those kind of things. And you also, if your regulation, if you have a regulation now, it's been on the books for five years, even if it was adopted after January 1, 2007, it's, it's protected. More than five years old can't be challenged. So if it's out there, and even if, if they believe it restricts residential use, if it's been there for more than five years, it doesn't matter. Always happens I can't find my hard copy of something, so I have to scroll through my computer. Could talk about adequate factual base. I guess in terms of other limitations that are out there, of course, federal law, in addition to the taking and federal statutory, well, there's federal statutory limitations as well, I'm not going to get into them, but if, for example, you have proposals under, under the Fair Housing Act, sometimes you have group home or treatment center type proposals that come before you and sometimes you have people get up and say, I don't want those kind of people in my neighborhood. That's like immediately create, tainting the proceeding. So it's real difficult if people get up and make those kind of allegations under the fair housing rules for you to, to say no to an application, because you, when you start to introduce that kind of prejudicial testimony, you get labeled with it almost immediately. So that's where, when you make findings about why you're making a decision, it's sometimes important to expressly state why you're, why you're doing something and including those reasons why you're not. Now, I'm not doing this because this person got up and made those statements, we specifically reject those statements. There's other federal statutes out there protecting, or in addition to fair housing, there's some specific regulations of telecom. There's a religious land use institutionalized preservation act or something like that, I can't remember, RALUPA it's called. I don't want to get into that, protecting certain religious things, uses which I guess there was an attempt to say that there was discrimination based on religious applications. Article 1, Section 8 of the Oregon Constitution and free expression and I think probably, if you've ever talked about sign regulations, you've heard, got an earful on that. So there, there are a bunch of substantive regulations, both state and federal, which create a framework for your consideration of legislative proceedings. And this is, really just intended to be kind of like a heads up about it and when we get into more specific applications as these issues are presented, I'll try to write you a memo briefing, the particular issue we're facing, so you have a little better idea. Is anything you guys can think of? Well, there's just one thing, here are my stack of papers. I mentioned development agreements as being a negotiated item in ORS Chapter 94, same place where the transfer development rights are, includes authorization for what is called a statutory development agreement, which is a negotiated agreement between a developer and the city, Wendora County, depending on who it is. And basically, when you come in for an application, usually you have an option to do by right. I come in, I give you my quasi judicial application, I demonstrate I meet the criteria and I get approval of a subdivision. But you usually have in your code more creative options, which are voluntary and negotiated. So you have this by right option, if you want to come in and do a straight subdivision, here it is. And then you have a more creative option, usually a plan development or usually subject to a development agreement, which can be a statutory development agreement, which is voluntary, negotiated. Where here, you're very constrained. You can negotiate things that may not strictly fall within the limitations of Nolan and Dolan, the takings cases that came out of the U.S. Supreme Court. So there's, there's an availability there to be more creative. Sometimes your job, quasi judicial proceeding, can get kind of boring in the sense that you're simply applying the existing facts to the, or existing law to the facts in the record and you don't get to be creative and you don't get to really make suggestions and, but when you have a more, you have two, right option and a negotiated option, and if a developer wants to be creative and he wants to negotiate, then this makes your job more interesting. Just throw that out there.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay. Thank you, Richard. And we have some staff training, do you have?
Nice to see everybody again. So back in the olden days, I was thinking back to how we did this when I first started working here and probably only Mr. Fearborn remembers this, that when you were appointed to the planning commission, someone from our department would bring you a big box of books and maps and things.
Kinds of goodies.
Yes. Don't bring them back to me.
Oh.
I don't want to. But then, a few years ago, we changed to going electronic and we brought you a laptop instead and tried to give you all the resources you need, but it occurred to us that we needed to maybe do a refresher on what is available to planning commissioners and also to the public, because all of this is on our website. And so I've given you a handout tonight to kind of go over that quickly. The first part, which is a portfolio of training information for planning commissioners, should be on your laptop and I know I loaded it onto, onto Commissioner Robinson's laptop before this meeting, but you may not have it. So what I also did is I, I did post it to the city website on the planning commissioner page. So what I have here on the screen is the city's website, lincolncity.org, and over to the left are a series of links. One of those would be boards and committees. And when I click on that and go to planning commission, you'll see we've updated it recently to give a good description of what the planning, who are the planning commissioners, what do they do, what, you know, what are your responsibilities, how often do you meet? And this is something we thought that would be helpful for folks out there that might be interested in applying to be on the planning commission, because you'll see that we have a list of current commissioners and we have one vacancy and we'll soon have another vacancy. So we are still taking up So we are still taking applications as far as I know. But just below the listing of all the commissioners, there is an application if someone watching this is interested in applying to be on the planning commission. And then I have a link for the planning commission training and reference materials, which I've preloaded because it's very lengthy and if you do click on that, you may want to go get yourself a cup of coffee and come back and it will load up. It's about 22 megabytes, but I preloaded it so that I could show you what it involves. The planning commission rules and procedures. This is an older memo from our previous city attorney that I will probably be substituting with something that Mr. Appicello wrote, possibly the handout that you got tonight. Then there's a series of documents about Oregon's land use planning program and just how that works in cities and counties. And it's all good introductory information. This next document, Putting the People in Planning, is, it's very lengthy, but it is a document that was put together by Oregon Citizen Involvement Advisory Committee. And so that's a good one. And then I heard earlier some talk about the statewide land use planning goals and so there they are, all of them. You can read through and find out more about them. The last document is a series of planning definitions. So that's something you can look at on, at your leisure, just refer to it when you want to, but it's available for not only planning commissioners, but anyone who is interested in looking into that on our website. So going back to the website, we do have some other information that is useful not only to planning commissioners, but to residents, property owners. How do we find the zoning map, for example? I get that question a lot. At the very top of the page, there's a drop down map for, or there's a link for maps and if you just rest the mouse over that, it will give you a lot of different maps. But you choose city maps and from there you can choose the zoning map and it will load up eventually. It's our two, our two-panel map and it's not loading for me at the minute, but there we go. So that'll show you the zoning anywhere in the city. And then the next thing I wanted to show, and this is a, this is a big one, how do you get to the municipal code?
Kate, one thing to mention about the zoning map is that you can zoom in on it.
Yes.
So that map that you saw is pretty small, but you can zoom in to, and navigate through it to get to particular properties or particular parts of town.
Now it's not going to load for you.
Well, I see it loading at the bottom, that was the problem before, I wasn't being patient enough. But it will load up here shortly and then we'll, this will see how we can do that. So up at the top, I'm seeing on my computer, it may display differently on some people's computers, but for example, this is showing, showing it at only 46 percent, but you can zoom in by using these tools up at the top if you wanted to look at a specific lot. And I, when I show this to people, you know, it's helpful, but I always encourage them if they're just not sure to always give us a call and we can pinpoint the specific lot if they're not positive about where they're looking at.
And also at the, at the bottom of the left-hand panel on that map is the key to the different colors, so it tells you what they stand for.
So that's our zoning map. And so then, the next thing, how do you find the municipal code? Well, where we keep that on our website, you can find it in various places. One of, one of the easier ways to find it is by going over to the left and choosing open transparent government, which has a variety of different links on it, but one of them closer to the top is the municipal code. What that does is it exits you from Lincoln City's site and takes you to an outside website that hosts our municipal code. Mostly, the planning commission will be working with Title 17 zoning, but you also deal with Title 16 subdivisions, very occasionally Title 15, specifically the flood damage prevention section. I think there was one time when you processed a flood variance and had to look at this part of the code. There is another title that you will probably be looking at shortly if you haven't before and that's Title 5 because that is where we, we look at information about licensing vacation rental dwellings. But all of this city code is for everyone. I mean, it's just all the different rules. You just generally aren't applying a lot of the different titles. But it's something good to look through. So we were, we were thinking, okay, how, something that's coming up in the near future, some zoning ordinance amendments, something we've been working on for a while, so clear vision, I think, is what we were thinking of. And if someone wanted to know, someone who's watching us wanted to know, well, how would I find what the current rules are, how would I do that? Well, it has a fairly decent search function, so if you wanted to do that, you know, you might put in the word vision just to see where that would come up. So what I see over to the side is something that talks about clear vision and that takes me to the part of the code where clear vision is currently regulated. So someone who's wondering how we're changing it might want to look and see how it's currently written and they can do that by using the search function. So going back to the open transparent government link, there's a lot of good information that's kept updated on this page. Some things that are possibly of interest to planning commissioners and the public are current land use applications and that's when we have something that's scheduled either for a hearing or even if it's not a hearing, for example, the one I'll show you is a site plan review that you may have gotten an email from me recently. It's not a public hearing, but it's something we've sent public notice out to neighbors and so they can come to the website and click on this link and learn more about that application. Another thing that you can see on that open transparent government page are draft ordinances. Right now, the only thing we have under draft ordinances have to do with the vacation rental dwelling matter and these are the ones that were already on the site and have been for quite a while. When something new is, is sent away, you heard Richard mention sending notices to DLCD 35 days ahead of a hearing. When we do that, then we'll post the new draft ordinances here. So the other things that you can find on that page are links to important projects that are being worked on such as the transportation system plan. There's a link that would take you right to the project website for that. See that there? That's something we hope everyone will look at and weigh in on as that project proceeds. Also, going back to the city's website, we have a link called documents and forms. Documents and forms, the way that it's organized is by every city department, most every city department has their own series of forms that people may need from time to time. Under planning and community development, we do too. We have all of the application forms that people would need to fill out if they're going to apply for something, but we also have our documents such as the comprehensive plan. And so if you just click that link, you'll see that the entire plan loaded on there. But we also have any amendments that have been adopted to that comprehensive plan since it was originally approved. There have been several since 2000 and so they're just individual links that I'm sort of resting the mouse over here. The other information that I'm not going to really click on them because they take a little while to load, we have put together some brochures on landscaping. You may recall a couple of years ago, the planning commission recommended and the city council approved some amendments to the landscaping requirements for residences. And so our department has put together some brochures for folks on ground cover, shrubbery, and trees and it's been a really good resource. We have hard copies in our office, but you can also just always look at them on the website to see what, what we recommend, but we don't require for people to consider when they're putting their landscape plans together. So, the other resources outside of the city's website that I've listed on this handout that may be helpful for you in training and just general information is the Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, their website, where they have, over to the right, a link called Oregon Land Use Planning Online Training. And if you click on that, you'll see that they have a lot of different options for training. And I think we may have seen some of these, I don't recall for sure. I know I've seen a few of them, I don't remember if we've used them in meetings before, but they are there and they're available for you. Also, the Oregon chapter of the American Planning Association has some good planning commissioner training links that you can click on and choose. They've done it for several years, so you can see what exactly the training topics are. And then you can just click on the links and watch those. And then the last link that I've loaded up here is also through the American Planning Association Oregon chapter, but it's a, it's a presentation. I haven't seen it, I think maybe Deborah has seen it, and it's a presentation called We're All Citizens, or it's, the subject is We're All Citizens, but it's a Planning Commissioner's Guide to Effective Citizen Involvement. So that link is listed on your handout and we may look at some of these at future meetings for, for training, but we wanted to make them available to you just to know. So these handouts are available to you, you might just want to keep that in your, with your laptop so that you can refer back to it, but if you ever have any questions about how to find something on the city's website, feel free to call us.
Thank you.
All right.
Any questions, commissioners?
I have one.
Sure.
I know the city has aerials and topo maps.
Yes.
Will we ever get to get to those remote or?
I don't know. I don't, I know they're not available now. I think that that's probably a goal, that eventually that information would be available through the city's website, but I haven't heard when that would be planned.
As far as the aerials, the basic aerial that we have is actually, it's identical, we provided it to Google, so if you go to Google Earth, we have exactly. I've gotten those off Google, but not the topo, no. Not the topo.
And but what it, what it would be, but Google would not have is the property lines.
Right.
You should keep in mind though, when you do access online resources like that that aren't in, like if it's a link in the planning commission packet that says go here to see the map of this area, whatever, that's great, it's in the record. But if you have an application before you and you go to an outside resource and you see, you know, oh, well, I looked at the Google map of this and I saw this or I saw that, that's kind of ex parte, you're going to have to bring that in and say, this is what I saw. So just be careful with that.
Thank you, Kate.
Just wanted to add to that, that if you do need a topographic map of your lot, we would be happy to help. So, you know, Jim's taken advantage of that a couple of times, I think. So come to the planning department and help get you that kind of information.
Okay, thank you. Next, are we done with training now, Richard? Okay. Next, we have reports and comments from the community development director.
None from me personally, Deborah has something.
Okay.
Yes, I want to announce that we are having a couple workshops in December for the National Flood Insurance Program. The liaison for the program in the state of Oregon, Chris Shirley, is going to be here and I will give you those dates. It is December 17th and on December 17th, we're offering two workshops. One is 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon. The target audience for that is realtors, insurance agents, mortgage lenders, bankers, surveyors, engineers, building officials, planners, and, but anyone, you know, is welcome to come. The same evening at 6:30 to 8:30, we're having a second workshop and that will be right after your meeting and we're figuring that we're going to have a short planning commission meeting that night, so by 6:30, we'll start in on the workshop and the target audience there is the general public. The issue that we're going to be talking about in these workshops is the new changes to the NFIP program that are the result of the Biggar Waters Flood Insurance Reform Act of 2012. And among other things, it does cause an increase in flood insurance premiums. So people who are, have properties in the flood plain or in the, in our case, in the coastal VE zone, will experience an increase in their flood insurance premiums and it can be quite substantial. So I think it would be very useful for people to come to hear these workshops. We are going to be videotaping them and I expect that we'll probably be rebroadcasting them or maybe have them available through the live streaming.
Are all the new flood zone maps out now for all the different communities?
Well, we adopted new maps in 2009 and they were based on new mapping techniques, so they were an improvement over the old maps. There was some change, in some cases, properties that actually were in the flood plain before were out of the flood plain. In other cases, there were some who were in the flood plain after the change, who had not been before. I understand that the, that we are getting new maps probably in another year that also include new methodology and so that should be even more precise in terms of defining the flood areas, flood hazard areas. So, you know, that's just another wrinkle, I guess, a little later on. But this, this is really an effort by the federal government to get the National Flood Insurance Program out of the red. They've had a lot of claims associated with Katrina and Sandy on the East Coast and countless other ones, but in order to do that, they want those who are in the flood hazard areas to pay actuarial rates so that they are actually paying for what it costs to insure them and provide claims when there is some kind of a flood. So, but it has had, I think, maybe more significant impacts in terms of premiums than, than the authors of the bill expected. So at any rate, I would suggest that people come and hear Chris talk about the act and the changes in the program and get their questions answered.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Appicello, anything else? Commissioners, anybody have anything? People that are observing us tonight, this is time for public comments on anything. Anybody have anything to say? Yeah, if you'd like to come forward and speak into the microphone, please, then.
I mentioned the date.
Well, we can't, we can't hear you, so it's.
Deborah Martin mentioned the date on that general public flood insurance meeting and I didn't.
That is the Tuesday, December 17th.
Yes.
It's 6:30. It's the one, and what time is the one in the afternoon?
One, one to four in the afternoon.
One to four in the afternoon, 6:30. Okay, thank you. Guy in the back doesn't have anything for us? No, okay. With that, our next meeting is scheduled for, well, the Tuesday, December 3rd meeting has been canceled, so our next meeting is Tuesday, December 17th at 6 o'clock. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.
If I can give you a little more information. The meeting on the 17th, we'll be electing officers for the coming year. And staff had good ideas. The 17th, we're going to be bringing you some legislative amendments as well, or, yeah. Well, actually, no, actually, our good ideas will come up in January, I should mention it, January 7th. Be hearings on VRD, regulations, proposed VRD regulations, clear vision triangles, accessory dwelling units, and cottage clusters, so you'll be back to being busy.
In January?
Coming next year.
Okay. Okay, and then the election of officers is short straws?
Yes.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.